Virtual. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
He is muted.
He's muted. Okay. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Wiley.
Present, appearing from my home in Inxter, Michigan, County of Wayne.
Councilmember Chisholm.
Present, reporting virtually from my home, Inxter, Michigan, County of Wayne.
Councilmember Shaw. Councilmember Shaw, are you with us?
I don't see him. Did he? Did we lose him?
His name is on here. It says he's unmuted. Maybe he has some technical difficulties.
Yes.
There he is.
There he is. Councilmember Williams.
The county of Wayne.
Councilmember Washington.
Appearing, appearing virtually from my home in the city of Inxter, County of Wayne.
And I must acknowledge our Chair, Mayor Pro Tim Howard.
Yes, here, virtual in the city of Inxter, in my home.
We have a quorum.
All right.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry, I didn't say I was here in the city of Inxter, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Okay, you know the dead city clerk?
Yes.
All right. Pledge of allegiance, Councilmember Williams, would you like to give us a prayer?
Let us pray. Father God, we come right now, nor the way, but lean on your everlasting love. Father, we just ask that you guide us and lead us in this city of Inxter, will it become that city of love? And give his name repaid, amen.
Amen. Okay, Troy, I pledge allegiance, thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God,
Okay, roll call. And we did roll call, I'm sorry. Okay, approval of agenda.
So move.
Any support?
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Roll call, City Clerk.
Councilmember Chisholm.
Yes.
Councilmember Shaw.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Me.
Councilmember Washington.
Yes.
And Councilmember Wiley.
No.
So we have a five, one, four, I'm sorry, four yays, and one nay.
Okay, approved. Okay, we do have a presentation from Mr. Stephen Grady, I'm not sure if he's on.
I want a clarification. There were two nays.
There were two nays?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Williams voted nay.
Okay, so it's two names.
So three, and two.
Okay. Okay, approval of agenda has been passed. Okay, up under, presentation, we do have Mr. Stephen Grady, is he on the line? If he is, can someone unmute him?
I see a Stephen's iPhone. I'm not sure. That's him?
Yeah, he did raise his hand, he's raising his hands, I think that's him.
Yes.
He's unmuted.
Hi, Mr. Grady.
Hello, everyone, how are you? I'm trying to start my video as well, I'm not able to get that unlatched.
The host would have to, COI AV would have to, there we go.
There we go.
Okay.
There I am, hey, everyone, how are you?
Hi, how are you?
Doing very well. I would also ask the host, my colleague, Javion Johnson should be on the call as well. And if I could have the host to add him to this discussion, I would appreciate it. And to this august body, I thank you all so much for giving me an opportunity to speak with you tonight during your session. I bring you greetings from our Wayne County Executive, Warren Evans. And he appreciates the opportunity to share with you just a few things about our emergency rental assistance program. Let me make sure that Javion, there he is, Javion, could you introduce yourself, please?
Good evening, family, my name is Javion Johnson, Community Outreach Liaison for the Wayne County Executive. It's good to see all the familiar faces, so thank you for having us.
Hi, how are you?
Good, good.
That's good.
So we're gonna go right into it, ladies and gentlemen. I have a short video that I'm going to show, and then I want to turn it over to Javion, who will explain the details of the Emergency Rental Assistance Program, also known as E-RAP. And then we'd like to open it up to any brief questions or comments from the council that you might have for us. If I could share my content, I do have a brief video that I'd like to be able to show, so I'm gonna ask the host to give me the ability to share my screen.
Be able to now.
Very good, thank you, Councilman Chisholm, good to see you, namesake.
Hey, good to see you as well.
You are the V E N, I am the C A. But thank you so much, I appreciate that, let me see if I can sort this out here where I can share. I'm seeing some things on here. I don't see the ability to share my screen, which is what I'd be able to do. Possibly I can share the website, so give me just one second. And pull that up.
Yes, my apologies, Mr. Stevens, it looks as if you're accessing the meeting from a phone, so I'm not sure what the shared capabilities of that is on that device.
Yes, I apologize, you all, I am so new into this position that I don't fully have Zoom loaded to my laptop, so I'm having to kind of cobble together an experience from my phone, and I apologize for that. Javion, are you on your phone, or are you on your laptop?
I am on my laptop.
Are you able to display that link that I sent to you from the county executive?
Let me give it a try.
I am.
One second, I'm pulling up the link now.
Okay. Apologize for the technical snafus, ladies and gentlemen. I am actually twenty days into my new position, and we're trying to sort things like this out. But I appreciate your patience with us.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, I should be pulling up shortly.
Thank you, Javion. Ah, there it is.
We can't hear the audio.
We just need the voice, yeah.
Javion, if you could, send me a copy of the link. There's an audio prompt that you have to select before you showcase the video.
Okay, awesome.
I'll open up the chat box.
Okay, Mr. Jenkins. We're not going there today.
I just seen it too, wow.
This is probably on, on me, or so than anyone else. See, the Javion has sent the link in the chat. So if someone is able to pull that up. I didn't know that I could not share my screen, I thought that I would be able to do that off his phone, but I see.
Right, I haven't pulled it up, if you want me to share it.
Absolutely, yes, sir.
He got, looked like he got it.
It's just a brief video that'll kind of set the tone for what we're gonna discuss.
Hello, I'm Wayne County Executive Warren Evans. If you're a renter or landlord in Wayne County, living outside of Detroit, you can still get relief for any housing issues related to COVID-19. Wayne County's Emergency Rental Assistance Program can keep you from losing your home and significantly ease your situation. Qualified individuals can have their rental arrears covered up to twelve months, as well as future rent for up to three months. For more information, visit the website below, and thank you.
And thank you all so much for that, we appreciate your indulgence. So the program is really simple. It will pay twelve months in arrears and up to three months in advance of your rent if you meet the qualifications. And Javion is going to take you through what's going on in Inxter. This is a program that is really for the rest of the county outside of Detroit. Detroit has its own funds and pot to pull from, but this program is for those cities in Wayne County that are outside of Detroit. So Javion, would you like to take over?
Yes, sir, absolutely. So as Mr. Grady said, this, this program is very important as we are in tough times down the pandemic. Eligibility wise, we are targeting households who have come to harsh financial undertakings. Household incomes at or below the area's median income, eighty percent of the area's median, medium income, excuse me. One or more individuals must qualify for unemployment benefits or have experienced a reduction in household income ninety days prior to completion of your application. Again, as Mr. Grady said, it is open to all Wayne County residents who do not reside in Detroit. There are stipends, as well as other grants that will be given out for household bills, whether it's electricity, home and heating, water, sewer, internet, and trash. And there is also a stipend for relocation costs, and I'll give you some of those numbers shortly. Just a little background, there's around forty-five thousand households who are behind on their rent in Wayne County. That's roughly one hundred and three million dollars estimated in rental debt. The average rent debt per house, per household is twenty-two hundred dollars. So as we get into the amount of assistance, in regards to people who have suffered late fees or were late on turning in their rent, we have a maximum coverage of four hundred dollars. In regards to utilities, they do it by amount of residents in a household. So one to two residents, they receive a maximum of fifteen hundred dollars for their household. Residents who have a household of three or four people receive two thousand dollars, and this is in regards to utilities. And residents who have five plus family members in their household receive up to a max of twenty-five hundred dollars. And if they have suffered any shut offs, there will be a stipend of five hundred dollars, just to make sure we cover the cost and get their utilities back going. In regards to accessibility to the application, you can contact the call center at eight three three seven four two one five one three. Again, that's eight three three seven four two one five one three. And once you get in contact with the, with the hotline, there is, there is an option for those who need application assistance to actually set up an appointment, and they will direct you to the nearest location. For Inxter, your location is Focus Hope at seven five nine Inxter Road. That's Inxter, Michigan, four eight one four one, of course, but again, that's at Focus Hope, so once you call that number and set up an appointment, we can get you started either over the phone or in person. If you want to sign up today, because we're encouraging people to do it as soon as possible, so that we can get these funds to those who are in need as soon as possible, you can visit www.wayncity.com backslash rental assistance. Again, that's www.wayncity.com backslash rental assistance. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Javion, and in the, in the chat, I did post a link to our web county site that will have more information about the Emergency Rental Assistance Program. And what we're asking each city council to do, we're gonna be going to city councils throughout the county, we're gonna need your help. You know the people in Inxter better than we do. You know who needs help. This is, we have nine million dollars, I'm gonna say that again, nine million dollars that we are trying to get out to the community. So we want to partner with you in this process to get the word out, to get people to get over their fear of putting in an application so that they can get access to this money. Landlords can also make an application as well, so if you've got a landlord who knows that they have a tenant that is in arrears, the landlord can make an application too. We're just asking really to get the word out, help us, help us, help us, because this is way too important. We've got people right now who are sitting somewhere stressing out because their rent is in arrears, and we have the solution. If we don't get the word to them, shame on us. I know I've got my councilwoman, Washington, here, my very good friend, and I know you're gonna help us. Our clerk is gonna help us. We appreciate you all giving us this time to share. If there are any one or two questions that you might have, Javion and I would be willing to try to take a stab at them.
Okay, it's opening up, anyone have any, any questions?
This is Councilwoman Washington, I don't have any questions, I would just like to thank both Mr. Javion Johnson, also Stephen Grady, Grady for coming to actually share this information with us, so we can actually get this out to our constituents.
Absolutely.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, I do have a question for you. When is the deadline?
So what we're trying to do is, the deadline that we have set up is March thirty first, we're trying to get this money out by March thirty first. Because what will happen then is all of the cities and counties and entities who have not met their target of spending seventy-five percent of the money they have received, that money will go into a pot, and the ones who didn't hit their target will be able to draw from those resources and have even more money that they can give out. So that's why we're trying to push so hard, so we can get to that second wave of, of money that will be available.
Okay, so is this for rentals, rental only, or is it homeownership as well?
Yes, ma'am, it's only for rentals.
Only for renters, okay. Okay, and my last question to you is, once a landlord applies, would the, would the renter know that the landlord is applying? So it won't be confused, you know, will they, will they know?
Yes, ma'am, I do believe that there is a, a collaboration that has to occur there, once the, once the landlord applies. I believe that the renter has to apply as well. Javion, do you have any information about that?
So there are two separate applications, one for the landlord and one for the renter as well. So once you do click on that link to the Wayne County Rental Assistance Program, it will give you two options for landlord and for renter, so that will be.
Okay, all right, well, thank you, I would like, is there any more questions? From the audience?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Chair, I had another quick question. In regards to when you applied for, for the this program, renter or landlord, what is the usually expected turnaround for the renters when they need assistance for them to actually see the funds?
Now, you know what, that is a good question, Javion, do you have an answer for that?
I don't have a clear cut answer for the turnaround. I know if they do get in contact with the hotline number, that that would be provided to them. But I can also get in contact with our economic development team and give you an answer tomorrow morning.
Okay, great. So we will get back to you, Council and Clerk, with an answer for that, of what the turnaround, average turnaround time is, once the application has been submitted.
Okay, okay, Councilman Chisholm, we may have some hands out there that may want to ask, some participants may want to ask questions, I do see Sergeant Walls raising her hands. If you can just open it up.
There you go.
Good evening, everyone, I just had a question with regards to the program. If the landlord is not in compliance, i- is the question of certificate of compliance part of the program requirements? In other words, are landlords required to be in compliance in order to qualify for the program?
That is an excellent question as well. Javion, unless you have an answer, I think we'll research that one, too.
I am documenting these questions so that we can relay back.
Thank you.
No problem.
Thank you. Okay, we have Octavia.
Ahead, I do think that you, the landlord is probably going to have to be in compliance.
Final answer.
Thank you, and the reason I asked the question is, we did have someone recently who was in a situation where I believe they had applied for the program, and there was questions about whether or not the property was up to code, and that was part of the issue, and so I just thought it would be pertinent for landlords to know that in, in going forward, and hopefully the potential to obtain funds for their tenants to come into compliance.
That's a great question, and we will research that and get information back to everyone tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have Octavia Smith.
Yes, good evening, Pro Tim and residents and council, hope everybody is well. I just wanted to say that I have, I sit with MEDC every Friday when we do these presentations on the E-RAP program and things like that. So I've actually walked patients at Western Wayne Family Health Center through the process completely. No issues with their applications, and, and then a lot of them, and they still have not received an answer or anything. So this has been going on since, for about two months. And all these patients that we have participating in this program, they have not received anything. They've actually tried to contact, because they hadn't, hadn't went to Wayne Metro and through other organizations, but they have not gotten any help as of yet. So I hear what you're saying and everything, and I know that there's money available, but none of the patients, or a lot of the Inxter residents who have applied for this program, they have not been helped as of yet, so I just wanted to share that information, maybe you guys got some information where they can really get the help that they need. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What I am doing is putting my email in the chat, so if someone would like to contact me with a specific name, I will investigate that process and see where they are in the, in the pipeline, and we will sort that out.
All right, that sounds good.
Okay.
Okay, we have one more here, that was raised, Inxter Chamber Commerce.
And Javion has placed his email in the chat as well, you can contact either one of us, and we will research that, now what's going on, and see if we can remove that to folks getting their funding.
Hello, everyone, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, my name is Peggy Bishop Lucas, and I was wanting to ask a question for those tenants that may be deliquing in water. I wanted to know if there was any programs available to help tenants that were behind in their water, please. Thank you.
Yes, Javion, would you answer that?
Yes, once you, once you do submit your application, there is assistance for utilities and water is covered.
Okay, beautiful.
Absolute. Another utility that is covered is also internet. And so your wireless connection as well is something that can be handled as well. So Madam Clerk, that, that's all that we have, I want to thank this august body, and particularly Pro Tim, for reaching out and inviting us to come and to share information about the Emergency Rental Assistance Program. Javion and I, Javion and I will take your questions and comments, and we will research them and get back to you within twenty-four hours with some answers. And if anyone has participated in the program, and you, you've come to a logjam, we did put our email address in the chats, please reach out to us, because this is so, so important. We want to make sure that everyone who is eligible to get these funds and has applied can get these funds and get that pressure off of them. Save your home for the holidays. Thank you all so much.
Thank you, guys, now I will be talking to you, okay, thank you. Okay, moving on, consent agenda.
So move.
It's been moved, do I have any support? Support. Okay, it's been moved and support, Madam Clerk, roll call.
Muted. Okay, Councilmember Williams. Councilmember Washington.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley. Councilmember Chisholm.
Yes.
Councilmember Shaw.
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have five yays, zero nays.
All right, moving on to new business. All right, Madam Clerk, it's on.
First item for discussion is for this body to consider approval of the sale of one vacant parcel located on Fernwood between Harrison Street and Eastern Street to a local resident in the amount of fifteen hundred dollars.
Okay, with your pleasure. Okay, with your pleasure.
Support.
It's been supported. You, you mean moved?
I mean moved, my apology.
That's okay, that's okay. It's been moved. Do I have any support?
Yes, support.
Okay, it's been moved and supported, uh. Okay, City Clerk, roll call. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Any discussion. It's been moved and, it's been moved and it's in any discussion. I apologize for that. Is any discussion on this item? Okay, here and then. Okay, City Clerk.
Councilmember Washington.
Yes.
Councilmember Watley.
Yes.
Councilmember Chisholm.
Yes.
Councilmember Shaw.
Yes.
And Councilmember Williams.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, that's five to zero.
All right, motion carried. Item B.
Item B is also for this body to consider approval of the sale of one vacant parcel located on the east side of Byrene between Carlisle Street and Andover to a local resident in the amount of fifteen hundred dollars.
For move.
The movement is supported. Any discussion? Okay, here and then, uh, roll call.
Councilmember Watley.
Yes.
Councilmember Chisholm.
Yes.
Councilmember Shaw.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yeah.
And Councilmember Washington.
Yes.
Madam Chair, that's five zero vote.
Okay, motion carried. Okay, we are now at public participation. Uh, limit time is one minute. Councilman Chisholm, can you start?
Sure. Uh, for those who've joined us by Zoom application, please use the raise hand feature to be recognized. For those who have joined us by telephone, please use star nine to raise your hands to be recognized. Once you are unmuted, you have one minute to address this body. Please state your name for the record. At this time, Madam Chair, we have one hand raised.
All right.
Hello, yes, my name is Roscoe Jenkins. I would like to state that George Bernard Williams was very inappropriate and out of order earlier and I'm glad he was muted. Secondly, where was this emergency rental program back in two thousand nineteen when Mayor Wimbley was evicted twice for failing to pay his rent? Third, this is the last electronic meeting allowed by the Open Meetings Act. So see you all soon at the beginning of January. Thank you.
Thank you. So we don't have any more, any more hands raised?
We don't have any more hands raised.
All right, that's, that concludes our public participation. Uh, City Clerk?
I have, um, couple of things. Uh, the first is based on our last meeting, there was interest in uh, a special meeting workshop type activity to begin, evaluating and planning the budget and also for some, uh, a, a training opportunity. So I'll be sending emails out tomorrow with suggested dates, um, for this activity and you guys could probably use the voting buttons on the email to let me know what you think or just let me know your schedule. Secondly, uh, I'd just like to wish everybody a, a joyous season, Christmas season and, uh, joyous new year. And I look forward to seeing you all back in the new year.
All right, thank you. All right, City Treasurer?
Um, I have nothing to report, but I also would like to say Merry Christmas to everyone and I hope everyone has a Happy New Year.
Okay, Mayor and Councilperson. All right, we're gonna start with Councilman Williams.
Yes, I would like to, to, um, ask the treasurer, I, I, I requested all, all of the employees and, and, and the position at each department. Uh, haven't got it yet. I'm, I'm still waiting on it, uh, to the treasurer, if he's still online.
Yes, I'm gathering that information for the, um, um, actuaries. So I've got requests out to each department to give me an actual count for each employee. And once I get each department, I do have some department's information, but not everyone's. So when I get everyone's response, I'll send that to you.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
All right, uh, Councilwoman, uh, Washington?
Um, yeah, so I would just like to, of course, uh, wish everyone a happy holidays. Um, happy holiday going into the new year. And also, uh, would also like to, um, thank the Inks to police for acting fast, um, where they were able to act fast and help a young lady. So I just want to thank the Inks to Police Department for all that they do for our community and our residents and assisting us to keep the community, um, safe and just helping, helping people in our community. So I just wanted to say that as well.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Watley?
Uh, yes, ma'am. Um, I would like to go back to my original, uh, talk in, uh, talking about the, uh, moratorium that is, uh, currently in effect that needs to be revisited because it has not accomplished the goal that it's set for the citizens. Now, I've heard other people speak and say that people have applied for it, but applying for it and actually having a license are two different things. I don't believe anyone has a license yet and I will defer to the clerk on that. But the whole idea was to make sure that local residents were able to take advantage of this supposed um, recreate, I mean, supposed windfall. Now, we found out since then that it's not the windfall it's supposed to be. When it originally came into view, it was supposed to be eighty-seven thousand dollars per unit. But when they actually paid us for the one we have, it ended up being only twenty-seven thousand dollars. So saying that the money is the began dollar of end fall, that already has not happened the way it is. The other thing is the fact that because of the way this ordinance was put, where you can have a thousand feet from any other facility, makes it makes you able to have more recreational facilities for sale than anything else in this city. Now, if you had micro businesses, ten micro businesses can go in the space of one. So you're talking about getting that type of money for ten and it doesn't, um, involve screwing up our, uh, city by having a marijuana facility on every corner. So like I said, this has not been the, the windfall it's supposed to be. And because it's so new, I think we need to give it an opportunity to, um, to, uh, uh, we need to give it the opportunity so local people can, are able to, uh, engage in this. So that's why I would like to see us have a meeting where we talk about this again, like I said, and reinstate the moratorium because it is necessary. No one is going to give up money they don't have to. If we hadn't made this a stipulation, there wouldn't be any local people um, having the opportunity to do this. So we're the, we're the caretakers for this. We have to make sure that all of the residents have the opportunity to do what they need to do. Because if somebody can open a full-fledged facility and not share the profits, that's what they're gonna do. That's just human nature or business or whatever you wanna call it. But we have to make sure that our residents are given the opportunity to share in this if they choose to do so, since the ordinance is already here. You've already said okay to this. This is what we wanna do. Let's make sure it benefits the people it's supposed to benefit, which are the local residents. And the only way you can do that is putting, um, putting stopgaps or putting rules and regulations into place to make sure that their, um, their benefits or their privileges are protected. That's what we're here for. We work for the people. And we need to start showing that. Now, we did it once before unanimously voted to have this here. We need to do that again to make sure they don't. And then after that time, if no one has been able to do it, then fine. I'm not gonna say another word, but right now we need to make sure we're doing what's necessary for our people to see that they get their fair share. Okay, that's it, ma'am.
Okay, um, Councilman Wiley, so are you gonna email the City Clerk along with another council member to set up a meeting? I know this, I know this is the holiday, so I'm not sure if you wanna wait until the first of the year to do have this special meeting?
Uh, well, it's probably going to have to end up that way anyway, but I would be sending it to it. What I had hoped is, like you said, uh, Mayor Pro Tem, we have added things to the agenda before. So this shouldn't be any big surprise to anybody who's ever sat on council. We do that because there are times when we have to do business regardless, you know what I'm saying? So I understand that, but I, um, you know, I wanna make sure this passes. So I want everybody's support on this particular instance. So whatever is necessary to see that this meeting gets set up at some time, you know, or place, and who knows, maybe it'll give those people out there who thought they were disenfranchised the opportunity to step in during that time period. But at some point, we gotta make sure that we're doing what's right for the residents of Inks to. And if anybody on this council says they don't wanna do that, then there's some serious questions about why they ran, okay?
Okay, um, so what you do is just set up meeting, you know, email, um, along with the other council member uh, to the City Clerk and have it for the first of the year. And then we can have a special meeting or it can be on the agenda, you know, this, long as it's something. And then that allow the city attorney to give everyone, um, all the new, uh, elected officials, um, some, um, literature so they can understand what's really going on, okay?
That's fine, ma'am. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, uh, Councilman Chisholm?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I just have a few things really quickly. Uh, one, I guess, look at my notes, I'm sorry. I, yeah, two things. One was, I guess, to the City Clerk, would you happen to be able to, and maybe not provide it this time, but maybe in the distant future, provide a status on the past robocall policy, which we talked about renewments of community alert system? Um, it had, you know, the attorneys had signed off on it. Um, uh, Director Business has signed off on it. Media Director has signed off on it and wanna get councils input on it, you know, so we can move forward. Just because of one instance that happened last week, we had a water main break. And the employees had to get out and knock on doors and deliver, uh, notices because of the storms, and they needed DT to come out and hold a pole while they worked on it. And it would've, you know, helped get that out there and we wanna explore those different things too with regards to if there's an option with our utility service, and I'm talking about phone service, that it might be something incorporated in there that we can use that option and not have to pay for it, if, if that makes sense. Anyway, I'll elaborate on that later. I just wanted to know, Madam, uh, Clerk, if you could, I guess, get a status on that. And then the second thing was the, um, public notice that we had talked about briefly, did that issue get resolved that was put out in the telegram?
I'm not sure. I'm not sure which.
She muted. I think she said yes, sir.
Okay.
I did say yes.
Okay, great. And other than that, I just wanna tell everyone to stay safe during the holidays. Happy holidays. And also, I know there was an issue and I guess I'll follow up. Well, I am going to follow up with, uh, one, two, three net and getting the fiber line over to DPS for the last municipal building to be turned up. So I'm gonna assist as best I can and helping them contact the Railroad Commission. But if any of you or if anybody from the county is on the line with us right now, that might be able to render some aid to that, uh, please assist us so we could get this last piece connected and move forward. And that's all I have, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Shaw?
Yes, Madam Chair, I just want to, first of all, say happy holidays to, to everyone in the Inks to family, uh, and make sure everyone has a safe, safe and prosperous new year. And I do wanna say, uh, the District Six Advisory Board will continue to meet. And if you want to be a part of that District Advisory Board meeting, you can certainly email me at, uh, dshaw@cityofinkst.com. Uh, so you can, so I can get your email list and I can send you out the, the Zoom information. And I also, Madam Chair, want, wanted to say a big thanks to Officer Claire, Officer Drew, Officer Dukes, uh, for their great bravery that they displayed on December fourteenth. Uh, we had a young lady, I think our councilwoman had made mention of it, that they you know, saved the woman that was in the Roots River. Um, they didn't think of themselves as most of our police officers and firefighters do. Uh, they acted very fast and I just want to say thank, thank you to those three officers uh, for their great, great heroics and for all of our, uh, first responders and the job in which they do, um, and working for the community. And also, um, thank the young men that came with the uh, emergency rental assistance because assistance program is, is greatly needed. Uh, and also to our Commissioner Glenn Anderson, who has sent out information about this emergency phone. So that's all I have, Madam Chair. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Um, I have a couple of things that I, um, wanted to speak on. Uh, one, the Emergency Rental Assistance Program, we have until March thirty-first. So this is to our City Clerk, uh, City, I'm sorry, City Treasurer. Is there any way possible that we can get this information on the water bills that are being sent out? I know we did have some literature. Is there a way possible that we can have this information put on the water bills?
Um, you mean about the program in general?
Uh, yes. I mean, it's, it does, I mean, just, you know, something that alert, that alert them. Because we do have a hard time reaching all of our residents. And like you said, the robocall is, has not been set up. So we really need to find a way to get this information out to our residents. So I thought maybe that one might be a great thing or send out something to each resident, but I do know the water bills are going out. So is this something that we can add to that so they can at least read it?
I think once we approve it or, you know, we actually um, say that that's something that we are backing and that we believe in, then we can put that on some of our literature, but um, until then, you know, I'm not sure about how much we can put on our bills, but that's probably something that we could do once we approve it and say, yeah, this is something that we wanna support.
Okay, so I think maybe tonight would be a good thing that, um, if council, if my, my other colleagues would like to support that. And then, because it has been done before, I'm not sure how, but it has been done before, uh, to put it on the water bill. So that's one way that the residents know. Uh, even if the resident doesn't get the wa- uh, water bills, the landlords will get them. So if that's something that this body will, would like to do tonight, uh, just, just tell me. Um, another thing too, uh, I know I emailed you late Friday, maybe Saturday morning in regards to our monthly reports. Um, I have not looked at my email today to see whether or not I've gotten them, but did you end up sending them out to everyone?
Yes, I did, and, and along with the check register.
Okay, now, uh, were we able to come, to, um, include the, um, how many salaries on there and what's been paid out as of today? Were we able to include those? Into, I mean, in, you know, put it into the report?
No, that's, that's something that I'm still assembling. I've done some departments, but I haven't done all of the departments yet. So some departments I've actually reconciled and figured out what the salaries are and put it into a spreadsheet, but I haven't done it for the entire.
but I haven't done it for the entire, for the entire city. So once I'm done, I'll give an update to everyone.
Okay, so the balance on the ending balance will be correct or incorrect on those reports?
The reports you have are showing the balances for those line items that are not salary. So you could take a look at those line items, the ones that don't involve salaries, and it'll give you an indication of what's been spent as opposed to, you know, what we have left. But for the salary portion, that's the only portion that we won't be able to evaluate because I'm not done inputting all of the salaries into the spreadsheet.
Okay, okay, and so when is the last day to pay the taxes again? Is it next year in March?
Taxes, you mean like probably?
The winter, the winter taxes before it goes down to Wayne County?
On February.
Okay, February. Okay, all right, thank you. And that's all I have. Just wish everybody a happy holidays, a safe holiday.
Does he have a date for February? February what?
I believe it's the 15th.
15?
Yes.
Okay, one more thing before we close out. I do know that we are, I know the contract should be due, should be up for our IT. And I really, really, we really need to look at that. City Treasurer, you and the mayor, because the service that we have been getting to me in the last year has been horrible, and we have paid them a lot of money. So I'm not sure if the contract is over as of right now. Madam Clerk, maybe you want to send that out to us, send us out the date that it expires or when it's going to expire? But we need to talk about that. So in that special meeting, maybe we need to bring that up because this is unacceptable. My city clerk's phone was down today. That's not the first time. People, when I got in my car, because my phone does not hardly work at my job, but I've got phone calls saying that DPS Systems was down. Residents was calling wanting to know something. They couldn't get it. This is unacceptable. And this is not, this is happening so many times, and we paying them. So we paying them to do nothing. This is the worst that I've seen of IT since I've been a councilperson. This is the worst. So we may want to include that in our special meeting as well because I do know the contract is coming up if it's not up already. But I'm just unhappy with the services, and I'm not sure how the rest of my council people are feeling, but to me, it's unacceptable. But once again, everybody have a safe holiday, and we can call for adjournment.
Madam Chair, just one thing. I don't know, we didn't talk about the second issue in closed session. So I don't know if you wanted to still talk about it or just, we're just going to leave.
I'm not sure what you, we didn't have any votes. We didn't take any votes, so.
No, we had two, we had two matters that we went into closed session for. We didn't talk about the second matter. So, I mean, I'm just, you know, saying, I mean, we don't have to do anything. I don't know if he was just, Attorney Nader was just going to, you know, inform us or what have you. I don't know.
I think he was just going to inform us. I think he was just there just to give us an update. I don't think we would have to. I don't know whether or not we have to share it as of right now. Okay, all right. If it's nothing else, then call for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Support?
Support.
All right. Those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All right, good night. Good night, everyone. Happy New Year. See you, everyone.